August 5, 2020. And we just came out of closed session, so I'll ask Mr. Attorney Melching, do we have any reportable actions, sir?
Mayor, there was no reportable action this evening.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right, so what I'm going to do is read this for anybody who's following online. Anyone who's watching this meeting and would like to provide public comments, you must email your public comments to The city clerk will read prior to that item being heard, and be sure to identify which item that you'd like to speak on. All right, so Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Yes, Councilmember August, Councilmember Dynas, Mayor Proten, Lees Meyer,
Here.
Councilmember Sobek,
Here.
And Mayor Zimmerman.
I'm here. All right, so we are spread out six feet apart. We've got these plexiglass dividers in between us. So council members, if you're having a tough time breathing, I think it's up to you, but I'm going to just pull my mask down a little bit so you can hear what I'm saying. All right, what I'd like to do is is see if our wonderful Pastor Greg Perkins from the View Church is online with us today. Mr. Pastor Perkins, are you with us? Can you hear us?
I am.
He's going to be giving us our words of inspiration, and maybe we can unmute his microphone if he's following on Ring Central. Okay, Pastor Perkins, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay, we can hear you. It's a little echoey, but if you would, thank you for being with us this evening, and we'd certainly appreciate if you could give us some words of inspiration to start our meeting.
Thank you to the mayor and council. Thank you for this opportunity and to the great citizens of Menifee. If you would, would you bow with me for just a moment? Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for the sustenance, and for all that you've provided. Thank you for the ability to be involved in government, and thank you for those who you've assigned to govern over us. In the scriptures, you said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various level of city officials, and in particular for the assembled council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern, a sense of the welfare and true needs of those they represent, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence to do what is good, and the ability to work together collaboratively in harmony to do what is best for the citizens that they represent. I pray for the agenda set forth before us today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in this great city. It's in your most blessed name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. If you'd remain standing, council members, we're going to say a pledge of allegiance and maybe our city council member Sobek can lead us.
Thank you. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with everything and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Sobek, and thank you, Pastor Perkins. We just appreciate everything that the View Church is doing over there in Sun City, and that you were with us tonight for our invocation. So thank you, sir. We wish you all the best. All right, so now we're on presentations. This is item five, and I believe we have our chief Pat Walsh for with our quick update on his first month of service to our city of Menifee. Welcome, Chief Walsh.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a presentation. If they could put it up on the screen, that'd be awesome. Okay, thank you. And do I get to advance it, or are they? Nope, I'm going to do it. So I wanted a very short presentation. I just want to talk real quickly about the type of crimes we're having. This is, this is the first month of crimes. If you see the assaults, whoop, I don't know why. The assaults, these are what are called part one crimes. There's eight part one crimes, and we keep stats on both part one and part two. I'm just talking about part one crimes here. If you look at this, we, there's a lot of opportunity to bring crime down in Menifee because the theft and the vehicle theft are very high. We have a plan for that. We did do a quick PSA the other day. About a third of the vehicles stolen had their keys in them. So that would, that would make our crime go down if people would have some situational awareness. It happens. We understand it. It does happen. People forget, or they, they, they're cooling their car down because it's hot, and they go back in the house to get something. And you know, there's a lot of folks out and about not working right now, so they see a car running, the, why not? That's what, that's called a crime of opportunity. I did want to say, we do, we do have a category rape. There's two there. What I wanted to say about that is, that is in a domestic violence type of situation. It's not a random victim and a random suspect, so it's known suspect. So I think that's important to know that, that we don't have somebody out there doing that kind of crime. We've made eighty-seven misdemeanor arrests and twenty-three felony arrests the first month. And one of the things I wanted to highlight is the officers' proactivity. So, you know, you do two things when you work in patrol. You respond to calls and handle them, and then when you have downtime, you go and make traffic stops and you check businesses, and you actively go try to make the town a safer, a safer city. This isn't happening in a lot of parts of America right now. Police officers got their heads down and they're concerned about what's going on in the world right now. That's not the case here in Menifee. These officers are extremely excited to be here. And I, you know, I just wanted to note that, you know, we had two-hundred-and-fifty-four traffic stops, and you'll see here in a minute, we've only written fifty tickets. So we're trying to be lenient, but that's probably going to change pretty soon because we're still having accidents and the driving in town's not so good. You see, one of the categories is business checks. We're checking businesses at night, making sure that they're secure, and, and then the extra patrol, and somebody calls and says, hey, I have an issue. Can you just keep an eye on the house? Or I'm going on vacation, or, or I've had somebody kind of prowling around at night, and we actually physically create a call for service and send it to them, and they go out and check stuff. So, so they're really active. The officers are really active. I'm real proud of them for that. Here's our citations. We've written fifty traffic citations, fifty-four non-traffic citations. What that is, is pretty much all misdemeanors in California. You write a ticket for them. Even some felonies, stolen cars, you get a ticket. So that's why there's non-traffic-related citations. This, this number, like I said, is going to go up. We have two traffic motor officers that had to go, they're working patrol right now. We're waiting for the remaining officers in background to show up and take over so they can go work strictly traffic. So that number's going to jump dramatically once they're out just working traffic. I wanted to just say, one of the things, I'm going to just, I'm going to put a plug in for, for the alarm ordinance that we tabled in council. We've, we've responded to three-hundred-and-forty-one alarm calls this month, and nineteen percent of them were repeat alarms, which means, you know, somebody shows up to work and it goes off. So maybe this isn't the right forum, but if that could come back to the council, that would really help lower our calls for service. Or we're somewhere in the area of thirty-five-hundred calls for service the first month. So that's a lot of calls for service, and, and we're still down quite a few police officers. So I shouldn't say quite a few. We're down eight police officers, and they should come by the end of September or early October. Yeah, that's all I have, really.
So Chief mentioned that we tabled the item, and if I recall, maybe I'm missing, I thought that we continued the item and sent it back to have some adjustments, maybe because some of the fees and fines were a little bit steep, and we anticipated it coming back to us at some time.
Yeah, I thought, I don't know, I thought we tabled because this just wasn't the right time because of COVID and not working. And, and you know, I, to me, it really wasn't about the fees. It's about, we can educate, and then we'll have more, we'll have information on who to call when the alarm keeps going off. Does that make sense? If they don't have, if they're not registered with us, we don't, if it's not on the window of the business, or... So I just think it would help because if we can not go to the calls that are, you know, false, then we can do other stuff.
I think we can revisit it, and maybe one of us will ask for it to be on the agenda.
Okay.
All right, I did have a couple of quick questions. Can you, first of all, I've heard some praise recently about the fact that the Cherry Hills Plaza had been an issue, and there was a lot of the different factors that created a little bit of excess with the homeless, swag not being a part of our team for a little while. And so, but I do want to say, recently, some people said, hey, I've noticed the police presence in the Cherry Hills Plaza. So I wanted to just share that with you, but I did want to ask a couple of quick questions. One of them, can you give us a quick update where we are with the substation that's there? And will we be utilizing that sometime soon? And then secondly, the status of Crime Watch, whatever it's going to be called now in the future?
So, so we, we've gone, cleaned the carpets, we've gone to the substation, and there's some equipment that we need to, to put in there. But all the officers have the code, and they stop in, write reports, they're eating lunch there, and, and it's a great facility. You know, there's a clean restroom, and, and, you know, it's nice to be able to sit in an air-conditioned place and write your report. So the officers are using it pretty much twenty-four hours. They, we don't have office hours yet. We need to change the phone numbers, obviously, on the front. The sheriff is still getting called when people show up, see the numbers, the sheriff's department. So we're working on that. We have a company that's going to come change that for us. And hopefully that happens in the next week or two. As far as Cherry Hills, we, we've made twenty arrests there, most of them related to drugs. And so we're, we're actually putting a plan together. I was talking to the sergeant that's going to run that operation, and he, you know, there's some signage that needs to be put out and about, you know, no loitering signs because it is open to the public, but if there's some, if there's some signage, that'll, that'll help us to be able to enforce that kind of stuff. And then we're just going to stay very active there. We, we've noticed a couple folks that have shown up in the last week or so that we've never seen before, and, and they're there for a reason. If that's where drug dealers show up to sell, then they're going to, that's where they're going to be. And so we're going to make sure that, that both the drug dealers and the users are very uncomfortable there. And as far as Crime Watch, so we've been kind of holding off on our volunteer program because of COVID, you know, we can't, you know, most of the folks are retired. So what, what I decided this week is we're going to do all of their backgrounds remotely so that when, when this is lifted, we're ready to go. And I, we have, gosh, I want to say fifty names already. People are really interested in, in volunteering. We have a lot for them to do. It's just we can't have them in the building, so.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the update.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Just say one thing. I was going to do this, council updates, but I'm not sure you stayed up on, Chief Walsh. But anyway, I want to thank you over the, for spending several hours with me over in Cherry Hills Plaza. We had Beck was with some business owners. We toured it, then we went over, a day later, we went over and toured the golf course and talked to the manager over there about some ideas and so on and so forth. So one thing I did notice when we're out in the community, we didn't get to near as many businesses that I would have liked to.
Right.
But we did, we did see evidence, together, we saw evidence of what you were speaking about that's taking place over there. But I wanted to compliment you on how approachable you are and likable and accommodating you are to the people, gaining their trust and respect and so on and so forth. I saw that, and I want to compliment you on that, so. I, the mayor already mentioned the, the substation being open, not for walk-ins, but for, for police report writings and so on and so forth. And that presence over in the Cherry Hills Plaza and around that neighborhood, the people would be greatly appreciated, and I think that'll help clear up some of the problems we're seeing over in the Cherry Hills Plaza now. So I want to concur with the mayor. I've heard reports for as many as twenty people that they have noticed an uptick in, in the police presence over in that area. So I do want to compliment you, and it's kind of fun walking around with you too, so just so you... And I want to thank Armando for allowing you to spend some time over there too. So thank you, Armando.
That's all I have. Well said, Councilman, and I think Mayor Proten.
Yeah, I didn't get a copy of your PowerPoint. I just, I was curious, how many calls for service for the month?
Yeah, first of all, I apologize. I just got the stats at four o'clock today, so it's good. Put this together quickly. The last, the last numbers I heard was thirty-three hundred, but that was just before the close of the month. So I would, I would say somewhere in the area of thirty-five-hundred calls for service in July.
Okay. So just based on my experience with the public safety committee, that actually seems pretty light. It seemed like RSO was fielding about four-thousand, four-five-hundred calls a month. So that's, that sounds good.
That was about, it's probably about the same then.
Yeah, that's interesting.
Because those numbers came on the twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth, and we got those numbers, so.
And, and can you tell me, do all of those calls generate a response?
Most of them, most of them do. Like, a lot of the alarm calls, I wouldn't say a lot. I would say probably a quarter of those alarm calls, we get canceled halfway there, or we get canceled as soon as you show up because they've realized they've made the alarm go off, and they had to go dig for the code and turn it off and talk to the alarm company. So, but we, we've been responding to a lot of the calls for service.
Okay, yeah, it's, it's interesting that you're, you're below what RSO reports, but we have a lot more staff, and we're keeping, keeping well on top of it. So it seems, whatever. And then you said you had two traffic officers on duty, or they're actually doing patrol right now until you onboard the rest of staff?
So we have detectives, some problem-oriented policing pop officers that are going to do, they're going to, whatever issue comes up, we'll throw at them. We have traffic officers. They're all working patrol because we're down the bodies. So as, as we hire police officers and they go through a quick two-week orientation, you know, have to get their uniforms and go shoot, do all the stuff. Once we put them on the street, like Tuesday, we put one of those officers on the street, and one of the officers came off the street and went in as a detective. So as soon as we get people in and out on the street, then we can fill these positions. So they're all working patrol, not really, they're not really working traffic. They're handling calls for service.
Okay. All right, well, yeah, I would echo their sentiments as well. I appreciate, you know, having you guys out there. I smile every time I see one driving down the street. The presence alone is something to smile at, so.
Yeah.
I appreciate the report, and I really do appreciate everything you guys are doing. So thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to make a comment. Congratulations on your first month and all the officers and the work that they're doing in our city. I heard, you know, yesterday Lieutenant Abigail Bell and Captain David Gutierrez, they made a comment that was pretty neat that I wrote down. They said that they loved coming to work, that they loved the optimism of all the police officers, the smile on their faces and the bounce in their step. And so I just want to thank all those officers who've come and the work that you're doing. I'm anxious to get those other officers onboard. A question I have is, have you had any issues with COVID at all in your police department?
Yes, we've had, we've had an employee come down with, with COVID, and we've had family members, and we've had to deal with that because they have to go quarantine, and, yeah, and we've, we've had a lot of calls for service where the, where the dispatcher's actually asking, is anybody in the household have it? Is anybody coughing? Anybody have symptoms? And, and yesterday, we had a patient that was suicidal and had COVID. And so, you know, we have all the equipment, and we mask up and glove up, and, and then wash those patrol cars down very well. And if they feel exposed, they come back and bag their uniforms and put another uniform on. So we're being very cautious.
Okay, talking about dispatch, are they, we hired so many, and are they being able to handle the call volume?
You know, I talked to the chief about a week ago, and he said that the call volumes double what Marietta has almost, and very, the tempo's pretty high. So it's a good training ground, actually, for a new dispatcher, and they're handling it, and then two of them came. So they're sending a couple of them to our roll calls to talk to the officers and work out the differences. You know, you have all these police officers from all over the country, and they all, it's all, it's similar, but it's different. Does that make sense? So they need to figure out how to communicate on the radio. A lot of it's just plain talk, but, you know, there's some issues that are coming up on their side, issues on our side, and it's really nice that Marietta sends dispatchers to come and say, here's what we're noticing. And then, then they work it out. And, you know, that's the neat thing about the staff, too, our staff, they're very flexible. Like, oh, okay, I'll change that and I'll do it this way, and, you know, nobody's digging their heels in. They, they love the, they love that they get to be in charge of those kind of decisions, you know? It's not all coming down for me. It's, they're the ones working the system, so they should be the ones that come up with the solutions.
Great. Wow, I look forward to us getting more like Marietta then with less calls.
We're working on that.
So thank you for all that you're doing.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments? Thank you, Chief, for being here. We always look forward to your updates, so appreciate it. Please pass on some of the words of praise and encouragement from us.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, let's move to item six. This is agenda approval or modifications. Madam Clerk, do we have any modifications to the agenda tonight?
I do not have any modifications to report.
Thank you. So council members all in favor of tonight's approval of the agenda, say aye. Opposed, hearing none, our agenda is approved, and we'll move to item seven. Item seven is public comments on non-agendized items. This is the time for members of the public to address the council about items that are not listed on the agenda. Brown Act limits the council's ability to respond to comments on non-agendized matters. At such time, the comments are made. Each week will be limited to three minutes on any single item. Please submit a speaker card. Actually, please submit a, an email, and that email should be sent to publiccomments@cityofmenifee.us, and the clerk will read your item for us to hear. So please identify which item you'd like to speak on. Madam Clerk, do you have any emailed, non-agendized public comments?
I do, Your Honor. I do have a few tonight. And if I could see the timer, and I'll get started. The first one I have is a public comment by Don Slater, non-agenda item. It says, "Congratulations to Bob Carwin voted the number one music video in Menifee. I Know You by Bob Carwin, songwriter Bob Carwin." And he adds a YouTube video link on here, so I have that. I can forward to the council, and I will also have it in the record.
I think it's the makings of a number one hit.
The next comment is from Mark Yoo. "Very well. Now introducing the Mark Menifee Accountability Review Committee. Been in Menifee for twenty-five years and have awareness of the last city hall shakeup. As the curtain is about to lift on campaign season and with the startup of the police department, it is appropriate, it is a appropriate time to reveal Mark. There are several concerns that has come to light that will be spoken about in future days. Firstly, our expressed concern is about the videos of meetings put up on the website. It does not seem too urgent. It is also choppy, should be put up more quicker and not spliced together. Many thank you, Mark Yoo."
How's that last name spelled?
Y-O-U. The next comment comes from Ms. Miller. "MSJC went to the highest state game in football last year, which means their facility in San Jacinto produces state champions, and they don't need the stadium on the Menifee campus at all. If they increased the seating and put in night lights and added a glassway room on side of gym, they would have state-of-the-art football at Mount San Jacinto College. People just have to get used to going to San Jacinto, which is about as far for Temecula as is Menifee. There isn't enough acreage on the Menifee campus to have two baseball diamonds, six parking lots, four-five-hundred-seat football stadium, that is four times the size of Chaparral High School-Temecula, and same size as Marietta Nighthawk Stadium. You know what got ripped off? The beautiful Fine Arts Building and Banquet Hall, and the multimillion-dollar Appropriate Science Building downsized to four gloomy portables, and one of those flooded, and it took nine months to get the floor replaced. There will be a STEM building, however, the planned science building one went the way of football. This isn't a football college. This is, prepare those who need another career like anyone who makes a living at constructing anymore buildings, especially tilt-ups like the horrible theater on Newport directed by Cassie Klein. When is the prison fence coming up? This college prepares students who didn't finish high school for college week. This is just an insult to the children, to the earth, to the ancestors, who bequeath this land to MSJC for educational purposes only. Remember these words when the microburst hits and rips up all those materials it took to build this monstrosity that were logged by deforesting combines heavy equipment drills and all the waste and polluting use of oil to transport his diabolical shame. I get much more of a blessing and euphoria from praise and worship with a church family than from watching anyone lose a football game. I receive much more of a blessing from the ancient scripture lessons and historical teachings than for anything so disposable as a football game that no one will ever recall. Football matches this terrible disposable American-made trivia that has nothing to hold on to once the game over. That is what you support. Game over for the habitation of the earth because of more buildings in Menifee and stadiums by MSJC. The stadium will have multi-communication electromagnetic waves and 5G antennas and other unnecessary radio waves. Radio wireless communication for headsets are spying on people, and police crowds control action, which will destroy more bees' ability to find their hives and will prevent pollination." Okay, time's up on that one, and I have one more. This comment is from Adrian Lamoth. "First, I would like to thank the city council for voting in favor of withdrawing the resolution to place Measure DD affirmation measure on the ballot. This decision was financially responsible, saving taxpayer dollars that would have been allocated toward placing the measure on the ballot. This decision also makes sense since Measure DD is already on the ballot and places trust in the voters and the democratic process." And those are all of the public comments for tonight.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk, for reading those. This moves us to item eight now. This is council member comments and updates. Let's have Mayor, Councilman August start.
Thank you. Mayor?
It's contagious. All right, thank you. Councilmember Sobek.
Yeah, I just have a couple. Want to let you know that I had an executive committee meeting today for RCA, and the RCA committee has voted to to merge the RCA under RCTC, and that will be going to RCTC. And the approach is for them to be able to have a successful plan and to help work together as government. So I have a copy of the memorandum. a successful plan and to help work together as government. So I have a copy of the memorandum for each of the council members that I will give you tonight. Oh, and the one other I attended, I had a finance committee meeting that I attended and I attended the Interfaith and Community Service Council meeting, which I mentioned earlier that we, the guest speakers were Lieutenant Abigail Bell and Captain David Gutierrez.
All right. Very good. Thank you. That's interesting news about RCA.
So are you talking about RCA or RCA?
RCA.
So Charlie and Honey, right?
Yes. Yes. The director retired last December and there's been interim director and so.
Okay. So RCA or RCTC. Okay. Interesting.
Are you, are you the RTCT representative? You are? Okay. It will be coming before you.
Well, I will be speaking up about a potential conservation areas in the city of Menifee. It's one of the things I'm going to talk about here. So, Councilmember.
Thank you. I also attended the finance committee meeting. Also, I had a video conference call with Dr. Chadry, the chief medical director for the hospitals, just to kind of catch up, see how the hospital is doing. They're handling the COVID situation well. They've had to open up a little bit more space to accommodate those patients. They're still able to perform elective surgeries if the patient's elected, go ahead with that. They've had a really good working relationship with accounting when it comes to getting their PPEs and medications and things like that. So I just want to report that out, that they're doing well. And I appreciate what they do for the city and our health. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman. Mayor Proten.
Yeah, we had WR cog on Monday this week and significant to Menifee, we approved the expenditure of $2.3 million to go towards the Scott Road improvements for the widening project between Han and Sunset to our western city limits. So that'll continue forward with, actually with Carlos and they'll continue the planning and design for that to connect into Willemar. So it was, it was good news.
Excellent. Thank you for the update. I'll try to go quick here. I just want to share with the council that, uh, the city manager and Melinda Huerta and myself, we went and visited the Wickard Farm. I think you guys all know where that is on Scott Road. The Wickards are great people and they kind of showed us around their property and we got to see some of those historic oak trees that the property contains. And we had a pretty nice conversation about maybe potentially working with them to help preserve that area. There's 500-year-old oak trees and they asked about a vision that they had for maybe having a interpretive center or nature center for educational purposes over there. So it's something that the talks kind of were very positive. And I think it'd be neat to have something like that personally. We're just kind of getting started in the discussions of how we might be able to take, take those awesome amenities that are there, those physical nature amenities and also that that family, the Wickards, have been in Menifee for over 130 years. So maybe some history opportunities there as well. So just want to kind of share that we visited them and hopefully that kind of becomes something in the future, nature-related. And if there's an opportunity for a conservation area in the city, maybe something like that would be a valid place to look. Anyway, just want to share with that, share that with you. On the 23rd, the Chamber of Commerce had their board meeting. It was a virtual Zoom. That same day, the Rotary Club had a virtual Zoom meeting and I attended that as well. And I wanted to tell you that Chef Rosie from Provecho was the guest speaker and she had some accolades to share with the city just how much she appreciated the, um, the free permit for having outdoor restaurants and seating and dining at not just her place, but Myrna's and some of the other restaurants that are there, the Sun City Family Restaurant. And so she was speaking on their behalf and asked us to share some thank yous to our staff for being accommodating for them. So I wanted to let you know. I was on, I did a Zoom meeting with the Western Riverside County Projects and Programs Committee, which is kind of part of RCTC on the 27th. And then on the 30th, I was the speaker at Rotary Club and Jonathan Nix joined me because they were asking about some park updates and what's happening over at the Case of Estero Center. So he provided a lot of updates as far as programs that are happening now and some of the things that we've had to do because of COVID, but some of the things that his team has been doing to accommodate people that are sheltering in place at home with the food service and things like that. So I just wanted to thank John Nix for joining me as the speaker there at Rotary. On the 31st, I joined Mayor Proten Leesmeyer and the Arts Council because we kind of wanted to revive something that Mayor Proten Leesmeyer had brought up, what was it, two years ago, had to do with the utility boxes and getting those painted. So we kind of revisited that and I think we may go back to an original idea of just physically painting the boxes and doing some things. So thank you for being part of that and I hope that we could see that finish line someday soon.
Yeah.
And then finally, the Interfaith Council had a meeting. It was a virtual Zoom and I joined Councilmember Sobek at that. And there were some great things that were shared. There was a first meeting that we've had since COVID. So it was great to have the group get back together again, share some updates. So those are the things that I did. Sure. Yeah. We do it online. It's a Zoom kind of a thing.
Okay, same with Interfaith.
And Interfaith is Zoom. It's kind of the, kind of the way we meet these days, you know? Yeah.
Do you want to be invited to any of those?
I'm okay.
Okay.
You might get Zoom fatigue like the rest. Okay, so that moves us to item nine. Now, this is approval of, of the minutes and there's actually four different meeting minutes here. And I'm told that all four of these can be approved in one motion unless a council member wants to make a change or talk about any of them. If I hear.
So moved.
None. Yeah. So all in favor of approving the minutes, say aye. Those are from all four dates, June 17th, July 1st, July 8th, July 15th.
Aye.
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 Opposed, hearing none. That's approved unanimously. Thank you, guys. Let's now go to item 10. This is our consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar will be approved in one motion unless a council member requests a separate action on a specific item on the consent calendar. If the item is removed from consent calendar, it'll be discussed individually and acted upon separately. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments on consent calendar items emailed to you?
I do have a couple of them.
Okay, would you please read those?
Sure. Okay, if I can get the timer up. And both of these comments are on item 10.4.
Okay, and that's the Homeless Outreach Services Agreement.
Okay, the first comment is from Ricky Estrada. Thank you to SWAG taking on the homelessness issue in Menifee. If other independent agencies have stepped up in addressing homelessness, the council and city staff should have all options and agencies presented before them. Before the government makes a donation to an independent agency and participates in picking winners and losers in private enterprise, all options and agencies should be put forth. Two questions. Can we get clarification on the staff report of the statistics on SWAG? Were the statistics on encounters countywide or citywide? Number two, SWAG is requesting additional funding for rising costs in transportation. How has SWAG determined this? Gas prices have fallen and airlines are on the verge of bankruptcy. Transportation costs have fallen for the entire country. In the near future or six-month term of the contract, it would be reasonable to predict COVID-19 will continue to keep transportation costs down. City council should consider a potential cut to the $58,000 or receive clarification on SWAG's rising transportation cost estimates. And then the second comment, if I can get the reset. Okay. This is from Adrian Lamoth. I'd like to address item 10.4, fiscal year 2020-21 Homeless Outreach Services Agreement. The Social Work Action Group seems to be producing positive results based on the contacts made and individuals helped into housing and substance abuse services. I think they could produce even better results if they were able to provide more than 48 hours per week of services. These services are not only beneficial to individuals suffering from mental illness and substance abuse, but also help to enhance a safer community in Menifee where all citizens feel safe, have access to care, thus resulting in lower crime rates as well. I would like to know how the budget was determined and why the services provided are currently limited, 48 hours per week. Thank you for your time.
And that's all the comments?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmembers, is there any items that we'd like to pull from?
Move approval.
Okay.
Second.
All right. I have an approval in a second and I'm just going to take quick times.
They're good.
Yeah, good. All right. So Madam Clerk, would you call roll, please?
Yes. Councilmember August.
Now, okay, so Mayor, the company that I work with, so regarding 10.7, company I work for, which is one of the consent items, I do work for them. So I would be recusing myself from voting on 10.7.
Thank you. All right.
Sorry, I apologize. I was thinking it was after the, cut it.
Okay. Excellent. I'm glad you threw that in. All right. So where are we in the vote?
Uh, Councilmember August. Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Proten Leesmeyer has recused himself, council, from item 10.7. Okay. Mayor Proten Leesmeyer.
Aye.
Councilmember Sobek.
Aye.
Councilmember Dynas.
Aye.
And Mayor Zimmerman.
Aye. All right. That passes unanimously. All right. So let's now move to our public hearing items. And this is item 11. And I'm going to read real fast. Anyone who's watching the meeting, if you'd like to provide a public comment, please email your comment to publiccomments@cityofmenifee.us. The clerk will read your item and make sure you identify which item you want to speak on. So we're on item 11.1. This is a CFD and it is for 20-1 McCall Mesa. Mr. City Manager, do you want to introduce our staff?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, sorry, I apologize for that. And council members, actually, I'd like to invite our repeated city manager, Rochelle Clayton, to overview this project with you.
Thank you. And Rochelle, if you can pull your microphone to.
Sure. There we go. Just waiting for the PowerPoint to come up. Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council. This item is to consider a community facilities district formation for facilities for the McCall Mesa project by Lennar Homes. At its meeting on March 19th, the Finance Committee reviewed this item and recommended to council, or recommended to take forward to council. On May 20th, this item was taken to the city council and the resolution of intention to form the CFD 2020-1 was approved. Lennar Homes has requested the city to assist them in forming the CFD to finance certain development costs of the project related to the city, Eastern Municipal Water District and Roma Land School District in conjunction with the joint facility agreements. The creation of CFD 2020-1 would level a special, levy a special tax within the boundaries in an amount not to exceed $18,000. At this time, in current dollars, the cost, the current cost estimate is 13, I'm sorry, 18 million, $13,135. The area proposed in the, within the boundaries includes 258 single-family residences on 72 acres known as McCall Mesa. The resolution of intention proposed a boundary map and that was recorded on May 28th. This is a map of the area. This area is, I have the, let's see, this is on the southwest, generally on the southwest corner of Menifee Road and Ralph's Road, Ralph's Road east of Paloma Street. The public hearing report was prepared by Spicer Consulting Group, which analyzes the facilities to be financed. Again, that the, based on current, current dollars, the amount would be approximately $13,135, $135 million, thousand, 13 million, I am so sorry, $13,135,000, which would cover the reserve fund financing costs and generate approximately $11 million net bond proceeds for the facilities. The facilities for, of the bond proceeds include $2.2 million for city priority facilities, 1.9 million for city development impact fees, $4 million for Eastern Municipal Water District facilities, and $3 million for Roma Land School District facilities. Again, 258 homes are included in this tract ranging from 1,769 square feet to 4,134 square feet. This project has previously annexed property into, I'm sorry, into CFD 2017-1, the maintenance district, which covers landscaping, lighting, street sweeping, pavement management, drainage parks and trails, and graffiti abatement service. The total tax rate is estimated at 1.95% of the projected home values. This is within the 2% allowable tax rate. The estimated, estimated assigned annual tax rates range from $2,400 for home sizes less than 1,800 square feet to $3,647 for home sizes greater than 3,600 square feet. The proposed timeline for this includes, of course, the resolution of intention was introduced and approved on May 20th. The intention was, and it was publicly noticed, to hold a public hearing on July 15th. A public hearing was open and continued to tonight of August 5th and the second reading will be on August 19th. All, all costs associated within the formation are borne by the developer and there is no fiscal impact to the city. Tonight, we are asking that council hold the public hearing. If passed, adopt the resolution determining the necessity to incur bonded indebtedness, adopt a resolution calling the election, hold a special landowner election and canvass the election, and adopt a resolution declaring the results. Upon approval of those results, introduce and introduce an ordinance as well as approving the joint facility agreements with Eastern Municipal Water District and Roma Land School Districts. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you for the presentation. Do you mind going back one slide?
Sure.
Ms. Clayton, and that third item, approve the joint facilities.
Sorry.
With EMWD in the school district. So do we do this every city-administered CFD that's for infrastructure and fees? Do we always partner with or do a joint agreement?
We don't always. It's upon the developer's request. Typically, one of the agencies will be the lead agency and partner with the others. In this instance, they are requesting both a JCFA with Eastern Municipal Water and Roma Land School District. The next CFD hearing that is scheduled for tonight's agenda does not include a JCFA with a school district, but does include one with the water district. So it depends on what the, what the developer's needs are and what they're requesting. With these, both, both JCFAs have, we've worked With these, both, both JCFAs have, we've worked with the school district and the water district, and they are scheduled or have already gone to their subsequent boards or their appropriate boards.
Okay, thank you. So, and I'm just trying to understand all this. So the rationale for a developer to say, hey, I'd like to be in a JFC, is it so that allows them to spend some of the monies on related things?
Correct.
Water connection fees that they wouldn't be able, if it was just a city-administered?
Correct, correct. They could, they could go to the school district and ask for a separate, a separate CFD to be formed with the school district and a separate one with the water district, but this is a cleaner transaction to tie it all together and, and have one, one total action.
Understood. Thank, I appreciate the education.
Sure.
I know this is Dean's world, but I'm still learning. Okay, council members, any other questions at this time? No comments yet? Hearing, no questions. I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. It is 6:51. Madam Clerk, has this been legally noticed?
Yes, it has.
And any correspondence received on this item?
No additional correspondence.
How about that's public testimony emailed to you?
Yes, I do have a public comment. Okay, if I can get the timer up. Okay, and this comment comes from Ms. Miller. I oppose Lennar Homes building any more anything. Why don't they recycle their focus of more water draining, debris making, deforesting, strip mining for aggregate and paving over our open space? They are a fire hazard placing more stick-built homes in Menifee or anywhere else. We need fire protection for the amount of houses they have already placed in Riverside County. No more housing. We spend more time in traffic than with our families. It's difficult to social distance when you have to go so early or late to get a space in the stores. Draw a number for shopping because of Lennar Homes. 268 homes on 26 acres for this McCall Mesa is a nightmare because of the thousands more homes that have been passed during COVID when our personal lives have disintegrated, and we can hardly arrange to speak at council, much less email. This in addition to Agato at 1,000 houses, Simran Ridge, 800 houses, Travella, and many more on the north side of Menifee. Just a nightmare, and get ready, the developers have attacked the west side, and the planners don't tell them that this is way over the human decency of making a nature preservation out of the rest of Menifee instead of a parking lot or plastic grass community facility district. Lennar, you have done so much damage because you are so uncreative as to reorganizing your company and giving construction workers good jobs that don't destroy the environment. And that was the only comment I had.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. So I'm gonna go ahead and close the public comment period now. It's 6:58, I'm sorry, 54. And council members, please indulge me here, we're gonna go through this formality here, so have some patience. All right, I'm gonna read this real quick. It says, "The public hearing is now closed. Based upon the public hearing evidence, the proposed special tax to be levied within the district was not precluded by a majority protest described in Government Code Section 53324." So I'm gonna call for a motion in a second now to adopt the resolution establishing Community Facility District 2020-1. We'll need to have a motion in a second.
So move.
All right, and Madam Clerk?
Second.
Would you call roll?
Councilmember Sobek.
Aye.
Councilmember Dynas.
Aye.
Councilmember August. Mayor Proton Lys Meyer.
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Zimmerman.
Aye. I'll also need a motion to adopt the resolution determining the necessity to incur bonded indebtedness and calling an election.
So move.
Second.
Hey, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Dynas.
Aye.
Councilmember August. Mayor Proton Lys Meyer.
I suppose.
Councilmember Sobek.
Aye.
Mayor Zimmerman.
Aye, that passes unanimously. So that says have the clerk announce the results, but that's, that's unanimous.
All right, results of the, the election, the ballot was received, and they were yes vote.
Okay, very good, thank you. So now, Madam Clerk, would you read the ordinance by title? Did I, did I skip?
Are we there yet?
I think I skipped, sorry. All right, I need another motion in a second, guys. This one's to adopt the resolution certifying the election results.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Councilmember, uh, August. Mayor Proton Lys Meyer.
Aye.
Councilmember Sobek.
Yes.
Councilmember Dynas.
Aye.
Mayor Zimmerman.
Aye. All right, that passes unanimously. Now, Madam Clerk, would you read the ordinance?
Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Menifee, California, acting in its capacity as a legislative body of Community Facilities District Number 2020-2 of the City of Menifee, Del Oro, authorizing the levy of special taxes. This is actually, I'm sorry to interrupt, this is 2020-1, McCall Mesa. I apologize.
I'm ahead.
I've got the title, if you want. It's Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Menifee, California, acting in its capacity as legislative body of Community Facilities District Number 2020-1, McCall Mesa of the City of Menifee, authorizing the levy of special taxes.
I know this one. Motion to introduce.
Good. Can we get a second on introducing?
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, would you call roll on that?
Yes. Mayor Proton Lys Meyer.
Aye.
Councilmember Sobek.
Aye.
Councilmember Dynas.
Aye.
Councilmember August. Mayor Zimmerman.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Now, I'm gonna need a motion in a second to approve the joint community facilities agreement with Eastern Municipal Water District.
Aye.
So move.
Oh, and also Roma Land School District together.
Aye.
All right, so is that a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, now we'll call roll.
Mayor Proton Lys Meyer.
Aye.
Councilmember Sobek.
Aye.
Councilmember Dynas.
Aye.
Councilmember August. Mayor Zimmerman.
Aye, all right, that gets us to the end, guys. Now, we are on item 11.2, and I believe 11-2 and 11-3 are the same project. One of them's for a CFD for bond infrastructure, and the other one's to put them in the maintenance district. So let's start with the first one, 11.2. This is CFD 20-2 for the Del Oro Project. Mr. City Manager, would you introduce your staff report?
Mr. Mayor, and Council, you're absolutely right. This, this is actually two separate actions and same process as we did before. One deals with a, with the CFD formation, and the other one deals with the annexation into the city's, citywide landscaping or citywide maintenance district. So just, just as with the previous one, I'll ask our Deputy City Manager to introduce. Thanks.
Thank you, City Manager and Mayor, members of the council. I did have some water, hopefully won't be so tongue-tied this time. And I apologize for all of the reading, but we do have this public hearing and the next item for the maintenance services. The annexation is a separate public hearing, so it'll need to be read separately. So thank you. This item is a smaller formation, a smaller development by Strata Homes, a development of 68 detached single-family residences. Again, the Finance Committee reviewed this item at their meeting on March 19th and recommended taking forward to City Council. The development, 68 detached single-family residences are, is located south of Holland Road, east of Hanover Lane, and west of Palomar. This item is going to the facilities. CFD includes a joint community facilities district, a JCFA joint community district with Eastern Municipal Water District. The total bond amount issuance is not to exceed $4 million. The tract itself is again 68 homes, over 17 acres. The resolution of intention was, for this item, was also heard on May 20th, and this was recorded on May 28th. This is the area that I just mentioned, south of Holland and east of Hanover. The anticipated issuance based on current rates will be approximately 2.5 million, which would cover reserve fund financing costs and generate approximately $2.03 million in net proceeds for facilities. The proposed facilities that will be funded with the proceeds include $116,000 towards the city priority facilities, $582,000 for the city's development impact fees, and 1.4 million for Eastern Municipal Water District fees. The development of the 68 homes range from 2,250 square feet to 2,850 square feet. The project is also again annexing into Maintenance District 2017-1 to cover the landscaping, lighting, street sweeping, and pavement management, drainage, parks and trails, and graffiti abatement. Total tax effective rate is estimated at 1.99% of home prices, which is within the 2% allowable. The estimated assigned annual tax rates range from 2,447 for home sizes less than 2,400 square feet to $2,647 annually for home sizes greater than 2,850 square feet. The timeline for this, again, the resolution of intention was approved and adopted on May 20th. Public hearing was initially noticed to occur on July 15th, at which time you opened the public hearing and continued it to tonight, and the second reading will now be on August 19th. The bond issuance would be requested by the developer after certain criteria has been met, development threshold, building permits issued, individually owned threshold, diversification of ownership, the value-to-lean ratio exceeds four to one, letter of secured credit, and an offering document would be prepared and presented to council prior to bond issuance for this CFD. The all costs associated with the formation are paid for by the developer. There is no impact to the city's general fund. And again, tonight, we're requesting that you hold a public hearing, adopt a resolution for bonded indebtedness, another resolution calling the election, I hold a special owner election canvas, and adopt a resolution declaring the results. And following that, introduce the ordinance and the JCFA, or the JCFA. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Clayton. Council members, any questions? Hearing, Madam, go ahead and open this public hearing. It is 7:02. Madam Clerk, was this legally noticed?
Yes, it was.
And do we receive any correspondence on the item?
No, we did not.
How about any public testimony emailed to you, comments?
Yes, I do have a couple comments. I have one comment from Ms. Miller. At least Holland Strata is not building a $400 million, 37-story multi-use office building in Menifee like another Strata company is in San Diego. This Strata is taking one of the last spaces on Holland Road where native plants and animals were housed and fed, the wild coyotes. Now, another field will be closed out, and the coyotes will come for your pets. The best that Menifee citizens offer is, well, we will keep our pets up. Instead, they should be saying, we have had enough of this runaway fire hazard building and population and traffic generated from more housing. What a ridiculous remark that if half of voting people in Menifee vote against a project, it will be brought before the council again. Stopping projects should be ruled by the state, city ordinances, sequel rule of law, and common sense that not everyone can live in Southern California. Nor should the foul remark that if a project appears to bring more economic benefit than significant damage to the environment, then it can pass. That is saying a project can break the laws, cause irreparable discomfort to neighbors. However, if it financially benefits its developers, it will be allowed to grade the land and permit a project of too many people for the schools, for the amount of firemen, hospitals, libraries, schools, mobility on the roads. Del Oro seems to be underway by Palomar High School. I did not take the idea to the school district to have them secure the land for use as a community garden and wild field study accredited classes. Because of heat from such projects, from air conditioners, rooftops, pavements, we are becoming more limited to when we can grow vegetables and what we can grow. We've had two heat waves this summer, and areas hit over 110 degrees. We are headed for another heat wave. Thousands of cows died in 2017 in that hot summer. Nothing reported yet in 2020 heat waves. Stick house building, which causes a great deal of deforestation, and then heat and population to transport the lumber, causes 40% of the annual CO2 covering the upper atmosphere and trapping greenhouse gases that send heat back to the earth. Who is going to buy these houses? Who will pay mellow ruse for maintaining the streets, placing the water distribution infrastructure into the area? Why hasn't Palomar High School said there will be conflicting traffic surrounding inexperienced drivers? This is just more developers taking advantage of people who must find work, who are ill, and the tables will turn when the houses are empty. And so is the forest, the mountains are strip mined, and for more concrete, the air quality is this unclear haze in Menifee. That's all.
Okay, no more comments, thank you. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:07, and I'll state the following, the public hearing is now closed. Based on the public hearing evidence, the proposed special tax to be levied within the district is not, was not precluded by a majority protest described in Government Code 53324. So I'll call for a motion in a second to adopt the resolution establishing Community Facilities District 20-2. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, would you call?
Councilmember Sobek.
Aye.
Councilmember Dynas.
Aye.
Councilmember August. Mayor Proton Lys Meyer.
Aye.
Mayor Zimmerman.
Aye. Can I have a motion to adopt the resolution determining the necessity to incur bonded indebtedness by calling an election?
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, would you call roll?
Councilmember Dynas.
Aye.
Councilmember August. Mayor Proton Lys Meyer.
Aye.
Councilmember Sobek.
Aye.
Mayor Zimmerman.
Aye. Okay, so I'll call the election. Madam Clerk, would you announce the results of the election?
Yes, the ballot was received, and they were yes vote.
All right, and now can I have a motion in a second to adopt the resolution certifying the election results?
So move.
Second.
Councilmember August. Mayor Proton Lys Meyer.
Aye.
Councilmember Sobek.
Aye.
Councilmember Dynas.
Aye.
Mayor Zimmerman.
Aye, that's unanimous. And then, Madam Clerk, would you read the ordinance, or maybe make the attorney do it again by the title?
Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Menifee, California, acting in its capacity as the legislative body of Community Facilities District Number 2020-2 of the City of Menifee, Del Oro, authorizing the levy of special taxes.
That was really good. Okay, so can I get a motion in a second to introduce the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Proton Lys Meyer.
Aye.
Councilmember Sobek.
Aye.
Councilmember Dynas.
Aye.
Councilmember August. Mayor Zimmerman.
Aye, that's unanimous. And so now, can I get a motion in a second to approve a joint community facilities agreement with EMWD?
So move.
And I'll second that, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Sobek.
Aye.
Councilmember Dynas.
Aye.
Councilmember August. Mayor Proton Lys Meyer.
Aye.
Mayor Zimmerman.
Aye, all right, that passes unanimously, and we are now on item 11.3. Same project, but this is for the citywide maintenance CFD. Ms. Clayton, did you have a report on this one?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Yes, of course, this is the Del Oro Project still, and again, this will be annexing into the city's citywide maintenance, maintenance district, which does include landscaping, light, lighting, street maintenance, street sweeping, park maintenance, and graffiti abatement. The maximum special tax to cover Tax A services will be $755 per unit per year. The maximum special tax to cover the contingent Tax B services, which would only be collected if the HOA defaults on its maintenance obligations, would be $151 per unit per year combined if the. would be $151 per unit per year. Combined, if the HOA defaults, would be a combined $906 per year. This is the area. The total special tax revenues to pay for maintenance costs will be $51,324 all associated. Costs associated with the annexation are borne by the developer, and there is no fiscal impact to the city's general fund. And again, we are asking you to hold a public hearing, call, adopt a resolution calling the election, hold a special landowner election, and adopt a resolution declaring the results. Upon approval of that, and then introducing an ordinance. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Clayton. Council members, any questions? All right, I'm going to open the public hearing at 7:11. Madam Clerk, any correspondence on this item?
No correspondence.
And it was legally noticed?
Yes.
And so how about any public testimony emailed to you on this item?
Yes, I do have one comment. I can get the timer. This comment comes from Ricky Estrada. "A lot of new properties are coming to light while 1.95% and 1.99% tax rate on property owners might as well charge the full 2% maximum. Californians are drowning in taxes. This conservative neighborhood complains a lot about being maxed out. City council keeps voting the high property taxes through. This is going great with Newsom's high tax agenda. California is going in the wrong direction. It's time for less taxes and more prayers." Ricky Estrada. Those are my comments.
All right, very good. Madam Clerk, are there any persons registered to vote in the territory of the district?
No.
Have the owners of the taxable property in the district consented to holding the special election?
Yes.
Do you concur that the special election can be held this evening?
Yes.
I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:13, and I'll ask for a motion to adopt a resolution calling an election to submit the qualified vote electors the question of levying a special tax within the area proposed to be annexed to CFD 2017-1 for maintenance services.
Submove. Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, would you call?
Councilmember August. Mayor Pro Tem Lee Smire. Councilmember Sobek.
Hi.
Councilmember Dynas.
Hi.
Mayor Zimmerman.
Hi. That passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, have you received the official ballot?
Yes.
Would you please canvass the election and the results?
Yes, it was a yes vote.
All right, thank you. So I declare those results as ascertained by the canvas. May I have a motion to adopt a resolution that declares those election results?
Submove.
Okay.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, would you call on that?
Mayor Pro Tem Lee Smire.
Hi.
Councilmember Sobek.
Hi.
Councilmember Dynas.
Hi.
Councilmember August. Mayor Zimmerman.
Hi. That passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, would you read the ordinance by title, please?
An ordinance amending ordinance number 2017-231 and levying special taxes to be collected during fiscal year 2020-21 to pay the annual cost of the maintenance and servicing of streetlights, parks, parkways, streets, roads, and open spaces, the operation and maintenance of storm drainage systems, a reserve fund for capital replacement and administrative expenses with respect to City of Menifee Community Facilities District Number 2017-1, Maintenance Services Annexation Number 5.
Motion to introduce.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, would you call?
Councilmember Dynas.
Hi.
Councilmember August. Mayor Pro Tem Lee Smire.
Hi.
Councilmember Sobek.
Hi.
Mayor Zimmerman.
Hi. Thank you. All right. We got to the finish line on those. Let's now move to item 11.4. This is Wheatfield Cell Tower reconsideration. Mr. City Manager, would you introduce the item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. If you recall, you actually dealt with this issue at length. This issue is regarding the reconsideration of CUP 2018-078, which is a proposal to build a 70-foot clock tower wireless facility. And if you recall, your board denied the project and subsequently sued. And at this point, I'd like to introduce our city attorney so that we can help us overview and introduce the project.
All right, welcome, Mr. Melching.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about the actual details of the project because I think the council is at this point pretty familiar with it. This here is an overhead drawing of it. You can see that it is in Wheatfield Community Park, south of La Fiedra, west of Menifee Road, and north of Holland Road, as proposed. And here is a view simulation that shows the cell facility. As you can see, the cell facility is concealed inside this 70-foot-high clock tower that has been proposed. And then down at the ground level, you can see that there is an equipment cabinet sort of off to the right of the clock tower there. And that's a 715-square-foot lease area. And it's surrounded by an eight-foot block wall. That's where all of the equipment that actually allows the cell tower to work would be housed. This is a project that, as Armando mentioned, came before the Planning Commission twice in August and September of 2019, and the Planning Commission voted ultimately to deny the project. It then came before the city council three times. It came on November 6. And then the city council sent this, the project back for some further analysis and information on December 4. And then a denial resolution was prepared and adopted by the council on December 18. Before I get back, get to this next slide, I want to say that when the city council considered this item in November and December of 2019, it was aware that a denial might well result in a lawsuit. AT&amp;T's representatives, when they were here, were fairly clear that that was a potential outcome. And so the city council moved forward with the denial, recognizing that that lawsuit might get filed, and that if it did, it might have to reevaluate its position once it had seen the lawsuit, considered the risks that were, the risks and costs that were associated with going forward in the lawsuit. And so that was the environment that existed at the end of 2019. And low and behold, at the start of 2020, on January 10 of 2020, AT&amp;T, in fact, did file the lawsuit against the city, and it's pending now in the United States District Court, Central District, California, the federal court up in Riverside, in front of Judge Bernal. The next bullet point on this slide is a sort of a summary of the considerations that were before the city council when it took the action, when it understood that there was a risk of litigation. And there were really three. The first was, you know, what would it cost to defend a lawsuit like this? Win or lose? And the estimate, there are no guarantees, particularly when you're a defendant in a lawsuit, but I've done a couple of these in the past, and I put that number at around $200,000. A lot of that is not, just to be clear about this, a lot of that is not legal fees. A lot of that is expert fees, because a case like this gets tried on two things that really do require expert testimony. One is radio frequency emissions, and is a signal strength in a particular location good enough to avoid the existence of a significant coverage gap? And that's something that a layperson really can't speak to. You have to hire somebody with the expertise and with the skill and experience to give in courtroom testimony in order to be successful in that kind of lawsuit. The second is, and we'll get to these issues from a legal standpoint in a minute, is these cases all turn on the availability of alternative sites. And so you need to have somebody who is able to sort of combine an understanding of radio frequency propagation and signal strength with the suitability of specific properties to put a tower on. And that's a combination of expertise that's also needed. Anyway, cost of defense was a major issue that the council considered when this was before it before. Likelihood of prevailing was also an issue. And I think the testimony was pretty clear, there's risk in this type of lawsuit. And we're going to talk about the risk a little bit more, but a lot of the winning and losing in a lawsuit like this depends on what constitutes coverage. Because one of the main tests that you deal with in a lawsuit like this is, is there is significant gap in coverage. And so in order to know whether you have a significant gap, you have to know what coverage is. And in the good old days, coverage meant, you know, can I make a phone call? And now it might mean, does my MapQuest work? Can I do text messages? Can I do YouTube? How about emergency services 911 and Amber Alerts? How much coverage is enough coverage? And it's not just about signal strength anymore, because there are so many devices, that even when you have a tower that has, that can deliver enough signal strength, sometimes there are so many devices seeking information from the tower, but it doesn't have the capacity to serve them all. Right? And so the world of what constitutes coverage has grown more and more complex over time, and that creates risk. Risk for everybody, but risk in a lawsuit. And then the third thing was, and there was substantial discussion about this with the council, was what do you lose if you lose? You obviously lose money in terms of the cost of defense, but there was also discussion about the possibility that you would lose the ability to impose all of the non-controversial conditions. There's a whole boatload of conditions that are imposed on a project like this. And certainly, the complaint that was filed by AT&amp;T says, look, in the end, if we prevail in this lawsuit, then we want approval of our project not subject to any conditions, whether that's landscape conditions or any conditions. And, you know, I don't imagine that a court would allow for the approval of a cell tower that was actually dangerous to the physical safety of people. But anything that went to aesthetics and the concealment, the clock tower nature of the facility, all of that, Menifee would be taken out of the ability, or could be taken out of the ability to enforce. Those were all of the issues that were in front of the council. And then ultimately, it issued the denial of the facility. That prompted the lawsuit on January 10. And then following the filing of the lawsuit, we came back and we have, it's no mystery, we've spoken to the council a couple of times in closed session about this. And then coming out of closed session, AT&amp;T and we stipulated to allow for what's called a remand of the case to the city council. And I won't spend a lot of time on this, but it's really a question of jurisdiction. When it was before the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission had jurisdiction over it. When it went in front of the city council, the city council had jurisdiction over it. Then it got effectively appealed in the form of a lawsuit to the federal court, and the federal court had jurisdiction over it. All remand means is that the federal court looked at it and said, I'm going to hand my jurisdiction back to the city council, so that if it wants to take another look, it can. And that's why we are where we are today. So I want to spend just a couple of minutes talking about only one of the claims. First, though, I'm going to talk about policy. In 1996, the federal Congress adopted the Federal Telecommunications Act. And that's really what the subject of this complaint is about. And I won't tell you a lot about the Federal Telecommunications Act, other than to tell you this. The whole policy of the Federal Telecommunications Act was to facilitate rapid deployment of telecommunications facilities to what they call, what Congress referred to as remove barriers to entry. And the idea was to make it difficult for local government to deny these facilities. For better or worse, that's the hand of cards that we were dealt by federal law. And that's where we start claiming. So there are three claims in the lawsuit, and they all are derived from the Federal Telecommunications Act. They're listed there. They're in bold and underlined. One is called an effective prohibition claim. That's the significant gap matter that I discussed a moment ago. One is the argument that the city didn't have adequate evidence to support its decision. And one, called a substantial evidence claim. And one is the assertion that the city's denial was in fact based on supposed adverse health effects of radio frequency emissions. I'm only focusing my attention in this presentation on the first of those three issues. I will say, as to substantial evidence, I think if you win the first argument, if you win on effective prohibition, you win on substantial evidence. If you lose on effective prohibition, you lose on substantial evidence. There's no point really talking about that one. And on radio frequency health effects, I want to be clear for the record that that was not the basis for the city council's decision. The city council was scrupulous in making sure that it was clear that it was not making a decision based on radio frequency health effects. So that's why I'm focusing on the first claim. As I mentioned, an effective prohibition claim, it comes out of Section 332 of the Federal Telecommunications Act, and it really comes in two pieces. And this is a product of decades of case law since 1996. In order to have an effective prohibition claim, you have to show two things. One is that you have a significant gap in coverage. And here, as I've already said, and I won't repeat myself, the evidence is kind of equivocal on the point. But remember, the policy favors the telecommunications company, and it's incumbent on us to show there was significant gap in coverage. And that's a difficult and expensive endeavor. The second showing is that there wasn't an adequate, less intrusive, an available less intrusive alternative that would fill the gap. And here, as the council knows, there were two school sites, one at Bell Mountain, one at MSJC, and then there was a vacant property on the other side of the 215. And the school sites were quite clearly not available, and there was an effort to outreach to the property on the other side of 215. We could argue about whether there should have been more effort, but there was an effort. And importantly, there's nothing in the record that's before the council that shows that there is some other available site. We are in a position to maybe argue that AT&amp;T should have tried harder, but it's not as though we've identified something that was doable. We can't make an affirmative showing. So we, the effective prohibition claim is the key claim, and I think it is clear that we have risk. We are... AT&amp;T has a risk too, but I think we have more risk when it comes to this, when it comes to this claim, especially given the federal policy. So when we look at that and consider it from a staff standpoint, we come to a position of recommending to you that you, on remand, approve the facility. And there are really five reasons for doing that. The first is, it helps you avoid those expenses, which there's no way to avoid them other than to not be involved in litigation. The second is, you avoid the possibility of that this facility will get ordered approved by a court without conditions that you care about. The third is, that the facility, as it's proposed now, is a concealed antenna in a clock tower, which, all things considered, nobody loves cell towers. Nobody. But that's not a bad design for a clock tower. That's why this project got a positive recommendation from city staff at the Planning Commission level. The fourth is, you will have better coverage surrounding Wheatfield Park. We could argue about whether there's a significant gap in coverage right now, but we can't argue about the fact that this facility will make whatever coverage is there now better. And then the last is a point that AT&amp;T made, but it seems more resonant in the time of COVID, and that is that the, that AT&amp;T has spent a lot of time and effort in putting together this first net network for first responders, which it's basically a priority cellular network that allows first responders to have coverage in events of emergency. And so it does speak to questions of public safety. I want to be clear, and it's funny, you know, you put together these PowerPoint presentations, and then you go through them, and you realize that there was something else you should have said. There are counter considerations. The counter considerations are why the council took the action it did in December. Some people don't like the aesthetics of this facility. Some people don't like, people have all kinds of reasons. Some people think that this facility might impair their property values. There are all kinds of reasons that people don't like this facility. I don't want to finish this presentation by leading anybody to think that those considerations aren't legitimate and aren't serious and don't deserve serious consideration. I'm here right tonight to deliver bad news about what the state of the law is and what the state of the city's risk is. And I think the law fundamentally says that we need to yield. We need to put those legitimate considerations to the side so that we can comply with the law, which favors rapid deployment of these facilities. And along those same lines, I wanted to say, you have five comments in your agenda packet. Hopefully, this saves Sarah from having to read them. They're already in the agenda packet. Four out of the five, I think three out of the five were people that spoke in December, and four out of the five were not in favor of moving forward with the project. One was in favor of moving forward with the project. With that, I'm available for any questions that you have. But to be clear, staff's recommendations that you approve the facility.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate the staff report, Mr. Melching. And so council members, this is an opportunity for questions, not discussion. And so council members, this is an opportunity for questions, not discussion yet, but a question for staff. I'm gonna go ahead and open up the floor if anybody's got any. I'll ask a quick question, Mr. Mouching or anybody. Is there still an opportunity for the public who is interested in seeing this go away to appeal to Valleywide and ask them to do as the school districts did and simply say, we're not allowing it on our property? Would that be an avenue for those people who have come to this place hoping that we had the legal power in the face of the Federal Telecommunications Act, which we don't, to, to be able to deny it? But does Valleywide still have an opportunity or an offer, an opportunity to be appealed to by the public?
So Mayor, I'd like to not poison the well on that. I certainly think it's, it is absolutely an avenue that people that don't favor this tower ought to take up with Valleywide. When I talk about poisoning the well, what I mean is it's not lost on me that Valleywide has already signed a lease for this property, and so may have contractually committed itself to move forward with that plan. And whether it can get out from under it, that contractual obligation, I don't know and haven't analyzed and wouldn't want to speculate on. I would say this, and, and I think you're making this point, but I'll try and say it just as explicitly, there was one party that had an ability to slow this down, and that was Valleywide. The, the city is a lot more, has, is a lot more constrained here.
So if this park, it happens to be in the city of Menifee, were under our purview, we would have the ability and the power to say, no, we're not interested in a lease, just like the college did, and just like the school district?
In our role as landlord, yes.
Okay.
Question?
Other questions, yeah?
Being that Valleywide is a nonprofit, correct?
It's a government agency.
It's a government, okay. So they're, they survive on tax revenue or, or CFE taxes, like that. Now that they've got another source of revenue other than taxable income or, or other property tax, how does that look? You know, how, how does that work? Are they able to make money on this legally? Does that, should that not be offset by the taxes that the residents are paying over there for Valleywide CFP?
I think, as to your first question, yes, in their role as a landlord, they should be able to generate revenue for the use of their property. As to your second question, I think that is a completely legitimate policy question about whether, if they generate revenue from a cell tower, whether there ought to be an offsetting benefit that flows backs to the, back to the taxpayers that are paying for those facilities.
Yeah, the general benefit.
I have a question for you. Have we ever, since we denied this, have we ever heard from Valleywide at all about this project? Of them? Any correspondence with the city?
I have not had correspondence with Valleywide. No, they have not reached out.
Have we reached out to them?
Okay, any other questions, council members? All right, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. It is 7:34. Madam Clerk, this was legally noticed, correct?
Correct.
And any correspondence received on the item?
No.
Now, the city attorney mentioned that there was public testimony emailed, but summarized them, so are we not taking public comments?
The, the ones that were attached to the report were a carryover from previous meetings. The last meeting, there were some comments that we just went ahead and rolled into the staff report. There are some public comments tonight that came in this week.
Okay, so Mr. Attorney, what should we do?
Only the comments that came in tonight. The comments that came in for the prior meeting are included in the public record. They were part of the agenda packet. They are all, they do not need to be read.
All right, thanks for the clarification. Madam Clerk, would you read the current ones for tonight?
Yes, if I can get the timer up. And this comment comes from Ms. Miller. So cell tower manufacturers come into Menifee and reapply to build a radiating cell tower in Wheatfield Park. There are no protection devices that can stop RFR radio frequency radiation from going through your body in the park. I suppose that could make a device, I suppose that could make a device to wear around your neck, however you are outside, and it probably would be ineffective. Many studies have indicated increased cancers are associated with radio waves when towers are placed too close to public areas. So the best solution would be to stand strong, city commissioners, and say no to a cell tower at the parks anywhere in Menifee. And the brief paragraph doesn't say if this is 4G or 5G. With a collection of 5G at every block in town because long radio waves do not reach very far, so there must be many more of small attachments with cell discs attached to phone poles. This must, this must affect the immune system and adding to weaken of the body to fight any passing infection or virus. Wait, does that mean coronaviruses stand a better chance against your immune system? Let's not experiment in Menifee. Let's not allow more cell towers of any kind. If we must be on the phone less, then we know that is better for our health. So not only do we radiate our brains by putting the cell phones up to our ear, we also radiate our bodies with cell tower projecting electronic magnetic waves through the air. Wireless technology should be used for important communication, not socializing. If we biochemically deteriorate our biosphere, the planet Earth, anymore, then we will compromise our health plus bees become confused with bombardment of radio frequencies. That means our food plants will not be pollinated. Firemen are already complaining of headaches when they stay at the station at night when there are 4G towers outside of the fire station. Reset the timer, please. This comment comes from Mark U. Evening again. Simply please let us know approximate cost to date. City has expended on this unnecessary shira. What is the amount of legal fee so far? 11.4 report, hypothesis, 200,000 litigation. If actual amount is not known, please give estimate like 11.4 report. Many thank you, Mark U. And then here's one more.
Hello, my name is Andrew Hollahan, and I recently purchased a home in the neighborhood of Sun City. I'm shocked and dismayed at the lack of cell service throughout Menifee. Since moving here from Orange County, it has certainly been a struggle to finish phone calls without drops. I'm an AT&amp;T customer and have never had connection issues in metro areas. Please approve telecommunication, telecommunications infrastructure so our first responders, consumers, and families can communicate on level with other development, developed metropolitan areas. No cities have been able to maintain trajectories of growth without upgrading the telecommunications infrastructure in line with commercial development. How am I supposed to work from home in this time of pandemic when our planning departments are stalling my ability to work by not pushing these through? Lastly, we should work with the phone carriers to put a large-scale build plan in place like the Irvine Company did to connect their city to the modern information age prior to the surge of residential infrastructure. Best regards, Andrew S. Hollahan. Let me just make sure there's no more.
And those are the only comments I have for that.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. And Mr. City Attorney Mouching, there was a question by Mr. U. He asked, how much has been expended to date? Do we have a ballpark number?
Mayor Zimmerman, I was just trying to go through my own billing entries to look at it, and I have, that I can identify on the new, this would be since the filing of the litigation. I don't even think there's 10 hours in this. I, I think it's a, you know, we've had a couple of closed session discussions on it. We have tried to keep the litigation cost to a minimum, filed an answer, dealt with the court on a few things, but I don't think, I think I would be surprised if $5,000 had been spent on this.
Great, that's, that's actually good news. Thank you for, for telling us. And if we, if we keep on fighting, it's possible we could be spending in excess of $200,000.
Yeah, not, as I mentioned, the lion's share of that would actually be expert costs, but it, it isn't insubstantial. It is significant work for a lawyer. I also, Mayor, as long as, I, I wanted to say that I confirm with the, the planning, the planning director and planning staff, I don't think that the city has any 5G facilities. We're not aware of any. Typically, when 5G deployments come to town, they come in giant batches. You'll see like 40 or 50 antennas come in because it's a network. And so there's no reason to believe the Wheatfield Tower is, is a 5G. It probably could be retrofitted for that purpose in the future, but that's not what it is today.
Okay, that's interesting news. I didn't know that. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing now. It is 7:42, and I will open it up now. Floor is open for discussion by city council members. Anyone like to start?
I, I would just like to ask our planning director, there's one of the letters in our staff report from the principal of Bell Mountain Middle School, who had some safety concerns, and how depending whichever way this goes, that how we look at, look at her email and just address anything that could be needed to be addressed there.
And so I believe if we have an approval tonight at the cell tower, we'll have to have the major CUP app design with the clock tower and the wall around it and all of those things, so it's as safe as it can be with our CUP applied to it. Other, other comments, council members? Sure. Forger?
Oh, there we go. Yeah. So most of you know that I, originally I opposed the, the, the cell tower in Wheatfield Park. I don't think, but given the information presented in Mr. Mouching's report tonight, and I don't think AT&amp;T really cares what I think or some of the residents think in this city, I'm going to, and a low probability for success if we continue on with this, I'm going to vote to approve the resolution. But I would like to add a footnote that had not Valleywide entered into this for-profit agreement, AT&amp;T would have had to find another location other than Wheatfield Park to put their cell tower. That would have been, and still is, my preference. For the future, the city needs, the residents of the city really need to strongly consider getting control of all the parks in the city to prevent this from happening in the future. And finally, I want to say thank you, and I'm sorry for all the residents who showed up at the last meeting and put eloquent points to opposing the cell tower. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the resolution. If anybody wants to second that after their comments, they can.
And I'll second with comments.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilman. By the way, well said, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So with my second, I would, I would just like to ask the, the people of the city for their forgiveness for this. It's, it's been said time and time again, our backs are against the wall with this. I don't think anybody in the council wants to have this cell tower in this location. But at the, at the cost of ongoing litigation and, you know, frankly, bad legislation at the state level, we don't have much of a choice. So I'd just like to extend my apologies to the residents of the city.
Okay, good, good points.
You know, I appreciate both of your comments tonight and how you addressed those who took their time and voiced their opinion and sent in emails. I, I too, our hands are, are tied. If I could, I would oppose this project.
So would I.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Councilmember August, what he said, I think he put it well. Don't think I could have put any better than what he said. You know, it's, it's, it's frustrating when you, when you're not a policy to make, making counsel, but just a regulatory one, or, you know, we have very limited ability to act on these things, which I think attorney would agree that, you know, that's all right, this one is regulatory, so it's, it's really frustrating, so. And we feel the residents frustration, we, we share it, so.
I think the way it comes down, the way I see it is if we were to approve, or the planning commission were to approve it way back when, we'd have a cell tower. And if we deny it, there's a chance, or most likely, we're gonna have a cell tower because someone in a black robe, a judge, is gonna ultimately approve it and may not have all of those protections and safety things that we would want to put on there. And it could cost us an awful lot of money. So I've been kind of consistent with my voting on this topic throughout, and it's been with the taxpayer in mind. I think it's, it's something that, just like Councilmember Sobek said, I don't want this either. And if, and if I had the, the power, and I think if we had the power, if this was our property, we would say no. And we'd be doing that with the children in mind and the people who live there in mind, that we think there's a better place than a park or something like this. But with all the facts and with everything before us, and we've sorted out all the nuts and bolts, done our due diligence and fully vetted it, we're faced with a decision that comes down to do we want a cell tower that's gonna cost us a lot of money, or do we want a cell tower that's not gonna cost the taxpayer a lot of money in fighting? So it's, it makes it, it makes it a decision that we committed. I did hear a motion, I don't know if we got a second or not, of Mayor Proten. Okay, any other comments before we call for a question? All right, Madam Clerk, would you call roll, please?
Mayor Proten Leesmeyer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sobek?
Reluctantly. Yes.
Councilmember Dynas?
Aye.
Councilmember August?
Aye.
Mayor Zimmerman?
Aye. All right, thank you. All right, so we are now on item 12. This is a discussion item 12.1, and it is considering a city of Menifee legislative platform. And Mr. City Manager, did you want to share what the idea is here with this?
Sure. Mr. Mayor and members of the ca- We became a city, and as you know, many cities across the state do have a platform, and it's well established, approved by the city council, and that platform is very consistent to what city councils in the past have supported in forms, in terms of legislation and past requests for legislation and things that go to the state and things that go to the federal government. So what we've done here for you is we put together a proposed legislative platform that includes many, many resolutions and position papers that you've done in, over the last 10 years, and, and added them into seven subject areas that we would want you to consider. And what, what I'll do is I'll allow the, or ask our city clerk to help us further overview some of the subject areas and, and the reason why we need or request that you consider this for future. Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and City Council. This item is a new program being introduced to help protect and promote the city's interests on priority issues and legislative matters that may impact the city. Some background on this. Request for legislation, positions of support and opposition generally come from the League of California cities, but we also see them come from advocacy groups, cities, and partner agencies. Historically, when the city receives these requests, they go to city council for direction on a position. Sometimes the request received is an urgent item with a response deadline as immediately. Sometimes there is not enough time to take these matters to council for a position, and the city is not able to respond timely. The purpose of a platform, it, it's a proactive way to help with the requests received for legislative positions. This is something that most cities utilize. This is something that most cities usually utilize to help facilitate pending litigation, I'm sorry, legislation. The League of California Cities includes about 30 different legislative platforms on their website. The purpose of the legislative platform is to efficiently and timely convey the city's position to important legislative matters that affect the city at the local, regional, state, and federal levels. Oftentimes, the city has sent a request for a position on legislation that needs to be addressed right away before it is taken for a vote before the legislature. This program will also help staff track legislation and establish policy and procedures to coordinate advocacy efforts to influence results. The legislative program consists of the legislative platform and the legislative policy. The platform was created, as the city manager stated, compiling the history of the city's legislative actions. And thankfully, staff didn't have much more than 10 years or so to, to go through, to get the history. The history was included as an attachment to the staff report and includes resolutions, letters, minute actions, and the like. The city's legislative actions were broken down into seven categories, which were modeled after the League of California Cities guiding principles. And those categories are listed here as community services, environmental quality, government, governance, transparency, and labor relations, housing, community, and economic development, public safety, revenue and taxation, transportation, communications, and public works. The policy for the program provides a process on how to track, update, and respond to legislative proposals. As part of the implementation of this policy, we will be able to put the tracking log in the city's internal internet for staff updates and comment, comments while following the legislation. When staff receives requests for letters of position, the city manager will evaluate the requests in accordance with the adopted platform. The staff will then prepare a letter of position for the mayor's signature. In order to keep the council notified as to what letters were sent, staff can include the legislative communication in the council's monthly report and/or provide a monthly update to council at council meetings. Requests that are inconsistent with the platform or silent on the issue will be, continue to be placed on the agenda for council consideration. The platform should be reviewed, amended if necessary, and approved by council on a regular basis. Staff suggests annually, as the city's needs may change and the council's positions may need to be updated, but the timing is at the discretion of council. Lastly, I wanted to give an example of the use and benefit of this platform. Staff recently received about 50 bills from the League of California Cities, and staff has been able to reference this platform for preparation of position letters. If this platform is adopted tonight, we can send the letters by the end of the week. If the platform is not adopted, staff will have to bring those bills to council on August 19th for approval of those letters. And that's all I have on this. Staff is available for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. And what you were just reading, is that something we have?
No, just my notes to-
Okay, I was looking, I'm looking. All right, thank you. All right, so what I'll do, Councilmembers, do we have any questions? Staff, no comments yet? Questions? All right, so Madam Clerk, do you have any public comments that were emailed to you on this side?
I believe I do. I was incorrect. There are no, no public comments.
No comments. All right, thank you. So I'll open it up now for discussion by the council. Comments?
Yeah, some comments.
Sure, there's going to be a couple. Mayor Proton, go ahead and lead up.
So, so generally speaking, you know, as, as legislative items come forward, I, I welcome debate on them because everybody has different views on things. But I certainly understand the rationale behind legislators, you know, putting things through at, at late hours and not really giving a lot of opportunity to agencies to comment. You try to shorten that window up and you don't get a lot of complaints. I've definitely seen that happen in the past. I, I appreciate the work that staff did, kind of retracing our steps. And I, I believe this sort of coincides with some of the things in our general plan and it's kind of the visions that you've seen over the years. I think this is a good approach. But like I said, generally, I, I like to, I'd like to have these things come to the council when the opportunity arises. But again, I, I understand that that is not always the case. You need to make an answer or you need to make a decision and write something quickly. I understand and I appreciate it. I would just ask that if we're going to go forward with this, that there's some, there'd be some reporting back to the council after, after these letters go out, where we're copied on things or something to that effect. We, we have an idea of what our letters are looking like. I remember, I've, I can recall a couple of times in the past where letters have gone out to the state and nobody asked anybody on the council anything about it, and it just kind of went out. This wasn't under this current management, but that was a little bit put off by that. Also, I would, to, to the point, to the extent that I appreciate the work that staff put into this, you know, supporting this and opposing that, I wouldn't be opposed to, in fact, I would suggest that maybe we put this on a tab on the city clerk's page. If this is our position, we should be able to stand behind it. And I don't see any reason why we shouldn't be able to put it up where everybody can see it. So that'd be my suggestion.
All right, other comments?
I'll make a comment. Appreciate your comments, Mayor Proton. Yeah, we, I like the discussion as well, but I do understand that there's, it's, like you said, timely and we need to be proactive at times. I did see a couple, couple on there that I was wondering if they could be, maybe we talk about it. I would like a couple, or at least one removed because it's such a controversial subject right now. And that would be under governance, mail, mail ballot elections. That it says that we support legislation allowing cities to conduct mail ballots, elections when appropriate to reduce the cost, which I agree with, or elections and increase voter turnout, which I agree with. But mail-in ballots, there's, there's kind of a big conversation going on with that. And I, I just don't feel comfortable leaving that one on there. So that would be one that I would ask to be taken off. Okay, and under housing, number, the first one says, support legislation and funding programs promoting production and rehabilitation of safe, affordable, and accessible housing and support increasing the maximum home sale price allowed under federal, state, and homeownership funded programs. Can you explain that one a little bit? What, because I see a couple of things in there, several items, actually. What would, is that the Freddie Mac? Is that what we're looking at on the federal and state home ownership funded programs? So I just like a little understanding of that one.
So it's under housing, under page?
In the staff report, page 802, and it's the first one under housing?
So, so this is tied to previous, previous resolutions and support letters? And I suspect that it would be related to HUD, HUD housing and programs that will promote, promote production of housing.
So it doesn't say anything about HUD there. Could we look at that one? And maybe?
I'm pulling up the resolution right now.
It, it could be, you know, at, at the federal level, HUD at the state level is, is Department of Housing and Community Development, EDC.
HCD.
The title of this resolution is Resolution of the City Council of the City of Menifee Supporting an Amendment to Section 33214 of the California Health and Safety Code to Allow for the Completion of Otherwise Eligible Affordable Housing. Looks like.
And, and if you look at it, it's really broad in scope.
It is.
What, what, in essence, is what it's saying is that we should, we encourage, you know, legislation that would promote housing production.
Yes.
And, and ultimately, though, we like the, the balance between the higher home values, but not necessarily very low income.
Right.
So it's like, it's like an aspirational type of a, type of a-
So we're all interpreting this a little different? Could this be written differently, or is this okay to go this way? I'd just like my colleagues to chime in on this one.
Yeah. Um, yeah. I mean, it could, it is extremely broad. Because I know the states we're talking about, if there's vacant property in the, in a neighborhood that you could build a high-rise right next to. I mean, is that the kind of?
Is that what we want to support?
That's, 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 no, I'm saying that's, that's what's being discussed. You know, is that, is that where we stand on that as a city? I think those are the kind of things that this, that leaves kind of open to interpretation on that. So if, so I, I mean, it's, those are the kind of, you, you can't write everything down because it keeps changing so much. We got to have at least a clear enough wording so that it gives the city manager at least enough direction on, on, you know, what-
I agree.
To oppose and stuff.
So this one was a little confusing to me. That's why I brought this one up. If you don't have, if you, maybe you can look at this one and look about how to reword it, or even if you need to separate it and, and add a couple, what, could I ask for that?
Okay.
Okay, and then on revenue, page 805, 806. So hiring tax credits, oppose legislations eliminating higher tax credits in enterprise zones. Could you, I didn't understand that one. It's the third one on page 806.
Supposed to be raising tax credits?
Could we look at, relook at that one?
Yeah, so we, we, we may have supported something. We, we don't have any enterprise zones in our city.
Yeah.
And I think it may be something in really broad in scope to support other cities. Sarah, do you recall if we ever adopted or supported any legislation or requested to support legislation like that? Because we don't have any enterprise zones.
Yeah, not off the top of my head.
Can we remove that one?
Searching.
That's-
Can we remove it?
Aggressive, yes, sir.
Okay. Let council weigh in on that.
Let's remove it.
Okay, so those are the only comments I have. I, I agree with Mayor Proten Leesmeyer. What a great job you did on this staff report, Sarah.
Thank you.
And I loved, you know, that we really emphasized greater local control on a lot of things, and that's really important. And I, I concur that annually, we relook at this depending on the change of the council and see a letter that goes out, whether it's in the monthly report. I think that's fine with me to see it in the monthly report. So that's my comments.
Do, do you support putting it on the clerk's website to?
Yeah. Yeah, great, great.
I have a, a number of ones. If you go back up to the beginning, packet page 797, under desirability, just real quick, you know, we ditched our police department July 1, 2020. And then, you know, we heard tonight that the storefront police substation will eventually be open. That, that, just a minor change here, but under schools, the last sentence there, talking about Menifee School, Union School District is working with their partners to be, you know, to process the school that you recognize under one school district. I don't think that's necessarily all the school district's opinion. I think as a city, it's our job to support the districts in whatever direction they're going to make themselves better. And I think we're better off to just have that last sentence struck.
So, so thank you for pointing that out. I think, I was thinking that you, you may choose to strike it out completely, or you may choose to add alternate language to the effect that school districts are attempting to work together for unification.
Yeah.
In general, don't name any school district names.
I agree.
Yeah. Please leave, leave the, I think, leave the section in, but I guess it's strike the names. I mean, this is, these are three good bullet points to talk about the city.
Then moving down to page 799, under community services. You have under human services, social services, and the programs that are addressed there. I firmly agree with those. But I think we need to add language and say that, that we, that we, something about, that these are, to include these, but not limited to these following things. Because there's, there's human trafficking issues that, you know, is a social issue. There's never things that are social issues that I like to see. Or at least, we can't list them all, but we can list at least that these are some of them, but other ones as they come up as well. I know, and the other thing is health and wellness. I'm not too sure which one of those though, but mental health. We, we have health, and that's usually assumed to be physical health. I like under the health and wellness to do, that we support both physical and mental health and, and wellness.
I like that.
Noted, yep. I think we can add the word such as, and then be all inclusive. And maybe other programs that are consistent to those will be included out of my-
And back down to page 802, under eminent domain. It talks about opposing legislation, you know, but it is for redevelopment. You know, redevelopment was done away with in the state of California. So I'm not too sure what we're seeing there.
Which one are you looking at?
The, on page, packet page 802, the very first bullet. Eminent domain. I was worrying, you know, you know, I have, you know, my opinion, eminent domain should be done sparingly. But, but here's for, for redevelopment. Right now, we don't have redevelopment anymore. We, we have substitutes, but I don't know. But if, you know, we need to be a little more specific what we're referring to. But I don't have an answer for that or what. If you tell me what, I know what it was when I see it, what I like to see, but I don't know what that is.
I wonder if we're getting hung up on the word redevelopment, knowing that that is a word that means something, but this might be just to mean for developed, to be developed in a different manner.
Well, redevelopment was a very hot item, word for a long, long time, so.
Maybe, maybe.
If we could change the word or something along that line. So.
I'm processing, but I'm, some ideas about maybe we did this because of the past, but there, there's also talk at the state level of bringing back redevelopment in different forms. but there's also talk at the state level of bringing back redevelopment in a different form.
Right.
In which case eminent domain becomes a very powerful tool to be able to use.
I understand that, I understand that. But I guess, because I live in the world long enough, that redevelopment means something specific to me. But if we understand that as a council to say for, to better our community in a blighted area or something like that, then that's what, that's what it means, whether, whatever tool that is. And if we're in agreement with that, then that's fine. Then going down still, mortgage debt tax. What is that? And can I get my mortgage debt canceled too?
Only if you support the legislation. So Sarah, do you have any?
I'm gonna try, Councilman Dynas.
Sure.
My memory from the 2008, 2009 timeframe was that when a homeowner defaulted on their mortgage, that meant that they didn't have to repay the loan. And the amount that they didn't repay then effectively became income, subject to taxation. And, which is a real double whammy for someone down on their luck.
Right, that becomes income essentially, whatever was forgiven. That's what, is that what we're talking about?
Was, where the loan was forgiven, which turned the loan into income.
Right, right, okay.
And then the income was taxable.
Right, okay, that's what we're talking about, okay. Okay. I mean, I'm good with that, if the rest of the council is. Page 804, under public safety. You know, we had a report by the police chief tonight about all the non-traffic citation issued, like, you know, for different misdemeanors up to, including possibly if you steal a car, you get a ticket. Yeah, I'd like to have heard the chief's thoughts on, you know, what legislation to support and not to support. You know, that should be part of our platform as well, you know, the zero cash bail, you know, you can't do anything. If you're under $900, it's just, you know, slap on the wrist or that type of thing. Do we want to take a stand on, you know, on those type of issues that are absent? You get, you know, for the last five years, that was an issue until the new legislation came in. But, you know, as a council, do we want to tackle that? Or are we okay with it as is?
I think we have, too.
I don't remember seeing anything in our past supporting that, but certainly the laws have changed over the last couple of years. And this council has talked about the ability to support a change in the law that would put criminals in jail or lower that threshold that they have. But the chief is here and I think he's working with other chiefs in California to address that.
So I, last, last year, we did talk about keeping California safe and that is on the ballot. It missed last, it's the last ballot, but it is gonna be on this ballot initiative. I would definitely support that. Some of the other ones are a bit controversial. And California Police Chiefs Association, California Police Officers Association, District Attorney Associations, I mean, we're all lobbying through those associations. So I don't know on the real controversial ones if we want to, if you, if you as a council want to get involved in those, fortunately, it kind of draws a target on your back as a city. And we are, we are fighting a lot of that legislation that's being talked about and possibly gonna get pushed through from that other angle. But definitely the fix to Prop 47, AB 109, that's a really good piece of legislation that will help, will help us all in California. And I think the council, we should have that conversation again now that it's on the ballot.
So that's the kind of thing, and generically, put something on there that allows if something comes up like that, for the city manager to write a letter of support or opposition, depending on, you know, what the legislation is. Give us, give us some guidance.
Support initiatives that create a safer, safer city and, you know, things like that.
Something like that, something like that, that, you know, keep it general enough, but I think it's something that we need to address. I think it's a council's decision, but it's something I thought would be important.
Can I ask again, Chief, you had mentioned to bring back the discussion. What, which, which items was that? Keep California Safe? Is that?
There is a ballot initiative for November. It's, I think they named it Keeping California Safe. And it just corrects a couple unintended consequences of a lot of these laws that have been passed.
Okay, so, okay, thank you.
But.
We'll come up with some.
Okay, then lastly, it's on the, the second to last page, it's under the actual policy. Under paragraph four, the procedure says ideally, the legislative platform will be reviewed regularly. I think we should stipulate, you know, some kind of a regular review. You know, things change rather quickly with the state and, you know, as well as, you know, council members, and so we should have a chance to redo that. You know, if the city manager, what you think would be a reasonable timeframe to review it other than ideally just kind of leaves out there the, we feel like. I think we should be a little more specific.
So I think we're recommending a yearly review, but it would be, would be probably a lot better if we do, if we do a review after a, an election. For example, every two years, we switch two council or three council members. And I'm pretty sure that the views of the council may change if we have significant changes in council seats. So we could, we could probably adopt a directive that calls for a review the spring after the election type of thing. Is that, does that sound good?
That sounds great to me.
Yeah. That's all I have, and I thank the council's indulgence for allowing me to rattle on here.
I did have one on page 803 and it's talking about cap and trade, which, and then it kind of goes into Cal Recycle Marketing Development's own loan program. I don't even know what that is. And we're trying to, and we're saying we oppose anything that wants to change that. I mean, does cap and trade apply to Menifee? Do we have producers of emissions and things like that? I'm not really sure what, why that's there. I got a feeling this was copied and pasted from some other place where it might have made sense. So where I've seen this is, it may not apply specifically to the city, but, you know, we, the state does have a cap and trade program where there's credit trading going on and that trading comes as funding opportunities for institutions like Cal Recycle to apply for grant programs to bring back to communities. So this was a very general proposal that, that seems to support, that we should continue to support the cap and trade program because that allows the ability for future grant opportunities to implement. Okay, if it makes sense. I really liked the first one. I first started reading this and we're on the very first page and it talked about the overarching guidelines. We talk about preserving local control, fiscal stability, funding opportunities. That's, that kind of says it all right there. And most of the things that are gonna come to you from the League of Cities to have us endorse are gonna fall under the umbrella of those. And as we got farther and farther, we kind of got out into the weeds a little bit. So. But anyway, I think there's, I appreciate all the changes that have been made so far. To approve?
As amended.
As amended? All right, thank you, Councilman. Do we have a second?
One second. Go ahead.
Let's go ahead and call roll on that item.
Councilmember August, Mayor Proten Leesmeyer.
Hi.
Councilmember Sobek.
Hi.
Councilmember Dynas.
Hi.
New Year's in Lumen.
Passes unanimously. We are now on item 13. We're on item 13, city manager.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I just, I don't have any comments.
How about city attorney?
No, mayor.
All right, and future requests, I think we did hear from the chief about an alarm policy to be reconsidered.
And to bring back a discussion on updating us on Keeping California Safe since the November ballot.
Second both of those.
So we have two new items on there. Anything else from anybody before we adjourn? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.